This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, 7:00 PM, August 9, 2021. Special meeting for our budget. There is a quorum present. That's Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, council member Hector Nahera, council member Warren Robb, council member Kerry Ricketts. I do, there is council member Jessica Clark. So we have all council members present. If you would bow your heads with me for invocation. Oh Father God, thank you for the many blessings you've given us and the great responsibilities that you have bestowed upon us. We pray that you guide us in being the people stewards. In Jesus' name, amen. And if you would stand for me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, A. Discuss, consider, and act to establish proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 2021-2022 and set a public hearing on the tax rate for August 16, 2021. For council, our finance director, Marcy Lamb, has prepared materials for you here. The budget that or for that you have has one addition. And that is a Public Works Administration Administrative Assistant. That is to handle the call load and administrative paperwork for Public Works. Mr. Rogers is online, I'd have him speak to that, but he is not. Anyway, this allows Public Works leadership to focus on their primary duties. Marcy, I'll turn this over to you, and if I've left anything out, please add it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the council. One of the things you have in your packet is the set of calculations that is prescribed by the state comptroller for us to use to calculate all of our tax rates. There's a lot of different numbers that go into that. Most of the numbers are numbers that you received last week with evaluations. And so I'm not really going to go over the calculations, they're fairly complex. But the results is really, you know, what we're interested in this evening. And there is a worksheet that was attached to in your packet. And it has several different columns on it. And I don't know if IT, if you could show some of the attachments to this item. Let's see, let's look at the, that very first one, the 2021 All Rates Calculated. This worksheet is where we show all of the different calculated rates. At the top, you'll see the net taxable value that's in the orange color. That is our actual valuation that will be used in the coming tax year to apply our tax rate to. That includes new construction that was not on the books in 2020. The green box is, the number to the right of the green box is the number that is used as the adjusted value for the current tax year we're in, 2020. And that is the evaluation as it has been from being certified last July of 2020 through this current time period. So during that time, even though we get a certification value each July, many protests and litigation can still be occurring throughout the year. And so this green, the number to the right of the green box is representing the adjustments that were made to our 2020 value. The reason this number is important is because this is the number that's used as the basis to calculate what they call the no new revenue rate. The no new revenue rate is listed on your sheet. It's the going from left to right. It's the second yellow highlighted amount there, .270094. And that is the rate that based, once everything fell out last year with the different values, you know, from litigation, et cetera, those are, that's the value that would give us the same amount of revenue dollars as if we'd known that all along. So that is our total no new revenue rate. If you'll see, it includes, as they all do, an MNO portion and an INS portion. And the MNO portion is the portion of dollars that would go into the general fund. And the INS portion is the portion that would go into the debt service fund, which is our Fund VII for general fund type debt. The other rate that's calculated is the no new revenue O and M rate. And that is the first yellow highlighted rate going from left to right. And this is just the MNO portion of the rate. And what that represents is basically a no new revenue rate from our MNO last year, what it would generate to be the same amount of money. From that rate, you go up three and a half percent. And so the, if you're looking to the far right, there's a shaded box that shows three and a half percent. That rate translates over to the left side to the voter approval rate of .273537. The next rate that we calculate is called the de minimis rate. The de minimis rate is only applicable to cities that have a population of 30,000 or less. And it is a rate that represents a rate that would gain you $500,000 worth of taxable revenue. That rate is on the next page. And that rate is .313429. One of the things we learned from the time we had the budget workshops to this last week is a little bit different than our understanding of things last year. Last year, we believed that anything over the voter approval rate, that .273537 would require a vote. And the interpretation of the tax law that we're now made aware of, the only point at which we're required, where there would be an automatic election, would be if we exceeded the de minimis rate, the .313429. In between the voter approval rate and another rate that's on the first page, the fourth yellow highlighted item working left to right, .283229. This is, or I'm sorry, the .284166, it's not actually highlighted. This is a rate that is eight percent over the no new revenue MNO rate. For those of you that have been on council before and are familiar, this is what we would have called the rollback rate. And this used to be the old voter approval amount. This is still this, the voter approval amount if you're a special taxing unit. We are not. But in the calculations, according to the tax law, you calculate this rate. And anything between the three and a half voter approval rate that is calculated and this taxing rate, special unit taxing rate. Anything between there, that, I'm sorry, anything between the no new, or the voter approval rate and the de minimis rate, you don't need to have an election. If you go over this eight percent, the voter special unit taxing rate of eight percent over your no new revenue rate, if you go over that, but still underneath your de minimis rate, then there's not an automatic election. However, the voters could petition for the council to hold an election. The last rate that I'm going to point out is in your tax rate total column on the first page, where over to the left, it says dollars budgeted. The amount .283229 represents to the general fund an amount of $2,618,544. And that is the dollar amount that is currently budgeted as property tax revenue to come into the general fund. And that dollar value does include the administrative assistant position that the mayor spoke about earlier for the Public Works Department. So the only change that has been made to the budget since the workshops is the addition of that new position. And this is where, we're just showing where the rate would be calculated using that dollar amount. However, it is up to you where you would like to set that rate. And so I guess I'll pause there to see if there's any questions that you have about these different rates and what they all mean.
This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. So I just want to clarify, as long as it is below the de minimis, .313, and below the old rollback rate of .284166, no petition can be called and no election, correct?
That's correct.
I've got it, thank you.
So I've got a question. So this new rate includes the addition of this new administrative person, is that correct?
Yes, on the worksheet, down where on the left-hand side, it says dollars budgeted. If you follow that rate or follow that line over, under the tax levy column, the MNO column, there's a number 2.618544. That is what we're showing as the revenue requirement for property tax value in the general fund. And that does include revenue for that position. And you will see that number later on the ordinance attachment to adopt the budget. It's in the ordinance attachment, it's been added to the revenue necessary, and then it's been incorporated into the Public Works budget as an expenditure addition.
Okay.
So I'd like to make mention here, council, is this $2,618,544. That's, that is a number after we have incorporated all our needs. And these are really just needs that you've seen before. With the addition of the Public Works Administrative Assistant, this $2618,544 is that number that balances our budget. And that tax rate would be a 7.603% increase over our, our adjusted tax rate, which is the .270094. If I get anything you say incorrect, Marcy, let me know. This is the tax rate that I recommend. It is, the theme of this budget was meeting our needs and personnel and equipment. This tax rate is being driven by the personnel required. So again, this would be the tax rate that I would suggest to the council that we adopt. Seven, or is the, the tax rate itself would equate to the, if I follow the line over to the left, would be .283229. That would be the tax rate that I would advise the council to adopt.
Mayor Holsey, this is Councilmember Ricketts.
Yes.
Real quick question. I know in that original budget, we'd looked at the 2.6. We had some items that we were looking at potentially still getting help with. This includes those items, correct?
That's correct. It includes those items. And we, we are ahead of that process in that the county and others who would give us assistance, they have not made any determinations yet. In fact, they have not even begun to look at the different projects that we have. So they are still budgeted in here, in full.
So this here also includes opportunity of stuff going back to the below the line revenue, potentially.
Correct.
If we get those other products. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
This is Councilman Robb, I have a question. I noticed in the budget, we have $800,000 for the sheriff patrol. Have we got a firm estimate from them yet?
No, sir. I've contacted, I can't remember her name. But they have been contacted, I've just not had any number finalized. So the number that we're showing in the budget is a three percent increase over the current year's budget. But I'll reach out to them again to see if we can get that number confirmed.
Okay, that's fine. I guess that's the best we can do. And surely, surely, it won't exceed 800,000, sir.
Councilmember Robb, I don't, I don't expect that would occur. I've had multiple conversations with Tarrant County Sheriff's Department. And there is, we have had no added personnel. We've had no added patrolmen. This would be just a cost increase that we're estimating due to inflation.
I do also want to point out that the extra amount that we budgeted in the current year, in case they had overtime in order to give us the coverage that we were requesting, we have barely used any of that additional money that was budgeted in the current year. So not only would I hope it wouldn't go up the three percent, you know, we've not used much money of that all. I think the only time we used any of it was in the first quarter of this fiscal year.
And I'd like to confirm that as well. In my conversations with Chief Canis, who this contract is under, is that they don't expect to be going into that money. They were very diligently not to. And as Marcy said, is that they have billed very little at all towards this overtime. So that, that is somewhat of a buffer as well towards any cost increase.
Well, if there aren't any further questions, under this item this evening, we would ask for you to set a proposed tax rate. And that tax rate will later, that would be the tax rate that is represented currently in the budget that's presented this evening. And then later on in the agenda, after you would approve the budget, should you approve the budget after the hearing, then once again, state law would ask that you ratify the tax rate. So it seems like you'll have some redundancy, but it's, it's just basically the requirement from the statute. So those are the two items under this agenda item is to set a proposed tax rate and then to set the hearing. We're asking for you to set the hearing for next Monday night on the 16th. And we will, based on what tax rate you set this evening, we will publish for the hearing tomorrow. And then you would be set to have your hearing on the 16th.
I'd like to make one other.
Mayor Holsey?
Excuse me one minute, I wanted to make one comment.
Okay.
I'll come right back to you. Is that this tax rate that we're recommending, the .283229, represents a 7.603% increase above the no new revenue rate. Under this scenario, as Marcy was describing earlier, is that an election is not required. And since it is below the eight percent, it does not give residents an opportunity to petition even. Anything above eight percent, they have the opportunity to petition. But I would recommend that we still, on our own accord, take this budget to the people and have an election. Just voluntarily do so. So that's the last word I wanted to say. I'll go to Councilmember Nahera, sir.
I think it was Councilmember Ricketts that was wanting to speak.
Sure, Councilmember Ricketts.
Yes, I was, I would like to make a motion to accept the proposed tax rate at 2.083229 and set a public hearing for August 16, 2021.
Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, I will second.
Motion is made to adopt the tax rate of .283229 and set the public hearing for August 16, 2021. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow has seconded. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, and I'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, council. Next item, please. Our next item is discuss, consider, and act regarding ordinance number 017-2021, amending the city's budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021, as adopted by ordinance number 026-2020. And my question is to Marcy Lamb, this is to reflect the corrections that the county has made, is that correct?
Mayor, this is, this is to show what we showed in the proposed budget document in our columns that showed the projections for this current year. There were specific line items that we thought we had perhaps budgeted too low on the expenditure side or not high enough on the revenue side. So whenever you saw the proposed budget book, you saw for this current year, an adopted column and then an expected column.
I understand. So this does not have anything incorporated from Tarrant County due to their adjustments? Very good. That was really my only question. So I understand the budget amendment. Very good.
Okay. I do also have a correction I needed to point out. Under the, let me see, under the impact fee fund, there, there was a, on the sewer line, the sewer expenditure line, there was an error. That line should have the amended budget at $184,837 compared to a original budget of zero. So that changes 184,837. For whatever reason, not sure, formula in my spreadsheet, the formula did not operate correctly. So there is a correction there. The impact fee fund is a self-contained, self-revenue fund. And the money that that line represents was for the impact fee grant for the La Terra subdivision. And it's the same on the water funding line where it has 214,164 compared to zero. And that $399,001 represents the total amount that that grant could represent. I think we talked about this during the budget workshop. And so any of that that is not expended in the current year will carry forward to next year. And with that being said, these budget amendments also reflect some of the earlier budget amendments that the council approved for the mowers and some of the other equipment that was requested by Public Works.
Marcy, what you just described, particularly about the impact fee, is that contained in any of the literature that is in the PDF, maybe in the top PDF, the ordinance 17, 2021, budget amendments 2020, 2021? Your mic is, your microphone is off.
It's in the second attachment.
Okay.
Page down, please, to, it will say Fund VI Impact Fees. There you go, on that page, whoops. Back one. Okay, yes, see on, at the bottom of this page, the, under the impact fee fund six, the expenditures on the line that says sewer, that 43,450 should be zero. And the right hand, the middle number in that column. Hang on just a minute. The middle number in that The middle number in that column should be 184,837. The right, the number in the right-hand column should be 184,837. So total expenditures on the middle column should be 399,001 and the right-hand column 399,001.
So when a motion is made on this, they should contain these corrections site or cite these corrections as well?
Yes, please.
So for the council's benefit, whoever's taking notes out there on this impact fee on six, on the expenditures, the sewer line item, the first item should be zero. The second item or this under ordinance effect column, that number should be 184,837. The third item amended budget should be 184,837. And the total should be 399,001 for both the right-hand columns, the ordinance effect column and the amended budget column. Did I get that correct? Marcy?
Yes, sir. Yes. All right, this is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 017-2021, the adopted budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year with the amendments reflected in Fund 6. Do you want me to say them? Because I can.
I will recite them if you, when I repeat that motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead then. To change the sewer current budget zero, the sewer ordinance effect, 184,837 and the sewer amended budget to 184,837 to reflect a total of $399,001.
Very good. Motion has been made to approve ordinance number 017-2021, amending the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. And with the following corrections, that the impact fee fund six expenditure of sewer, that the corrections of zero under the current budget be made, that the ordinance effect 184,837 and the amended budget being 184,837 with totals under ordinance effect being 399 and $1 and amended budget of 399,001. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Ricketts. I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Hey, council, I call for the vote. Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera? Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Our next item is 3C, and that's to hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. We'll start off with a staff presentation.
Yes, Mayor, the the budget is attached to the next item on your agenda that to consider approving the budget. The only difference between what is posted on the website to what you're looking at this evening is, once again, the position for the administrative assistant in Public Works and an adjustment has been made to the property tax revenues to raise the taxes for that position and then a expenditure adjustment to the Public Works budget line items. And those are the only differences. And that would be the only change that you're being asked to consider this evening. All the other changes were reflected from the workshops that were held earlier. And so then, and then also to note that the budget does include property tax revenues at the rate of .283229 that you approved earlier and are calculated in the property tax dollar amount.
Very good. Thank you. Any, anything else with regards to staff presentation before I go into the public hearing itself? All right then, I'll open the public hearing at 7:37 PM on August 9, 2021. Is there anyone like to speak to this? Do we have anybody who has submitted any form to request comment? Ms. Rice? Okay, I see there's four callers, guests that are online. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Very good. Council, I see no one, no one, anyone that wants to speak to this item. So I'll close the public hearing. That concludes item 3C. Item 3D, discuss, consider, and act regarding ordinance number 016, 2021, approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30, 2022. And I'll turn that over to Marcy Lamb. Any comments or anything to make?
I don't have anything additional to add from my previous comment.
Council, do you have any, any questions, myself or Ms. Lamb?
This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. I did have a question, Marcy. Last time, it looked like I took the requests and subtracted the reserves and that gave me the debt. But I'm off on this one. And so I know it's something to do with the possible lease and then move to M and O and the fund transfers. Can you explain that to me, though, how that numbers, how those numbers match?
Yes. Let me see. You all should have gotten a y'all should have gotten a handout that showed the capital project requests. And we did move a couple of items to O and M. They were on, they were more personnel items on call for the water department, storage space, storage space rental for Christmas in the park supplies and then overtime for park trash pickup. And then at the workshops, we had some items that were in debt and I'm not sure if I can totally remember them all, but some of them moved from the debt column to the reserves and most of those were up in the water section of this handout that you received. There was the generator, that automatic valve for the pump station and SCADA controls. And then I believe then the generator for the library was added.
Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, what, what difference are you coming up with? Maybe that'll help us identify.
Yeah, I just, I'm probably, most likely, I'm adding this up incorrectly or doing it incorrectly. So I take the request, the entitled, the total request for four, over 4 million. Then I subtract the reserves that are at a little over 1 million. And then you're also saying, Marcy, take out the move to M and O. And then even if I add in both of the water to capital fund transfer and general fund, I'm still off by like $215,000. And I'm sure, I'm sure it's me. I'm just trying to figure out where that, why I'm missing that.
Let's see. Okay, I think part of it may be down at the bottom of that worksheet where you should see the debt annual payments. The the water number is 83,356 and the general fund add is 125,33. That's 208,389 combined. So we've, we've shown the debt, what we, what we think we would be funding with the debt. However, what we've budgeted is only the debt service payments. And so I think maybe it's those debt service payments that might be confusing.
I think, I think that does clear it up. Thank you very much.
The reason that we are budgeting as capital, those debt service payments in the first year is that we don't have time to issue debt to get those payments on for this tax year. So the first time that debt would be included in our tax rate would be next tax year.
I had one other question. On the community park upper water crossing, I see it in reserves and debt. So should that be in, in both spots?
Probably not. Let me.
And why, why are you looking at that?
I did. Yeah. I believe it should I believe it should be in the debt column and not the reserve column, but I would have to double check that.
Another thing we talked about at the budget workshop was the possibility of the EDC funding community park electric outlet projects and additional lighting community park trail. Do we have, is it too soon to know if they would be interested in doing that at this time?
That's correct. It is.
So do you know, Mayor, have they, have they talked about it or has there been on, I guess they could look on their agenda, but do you know if they've even discussed it?
Mayor, would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
That is on the, it will be on the agenda for August 25th, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you very much. Those are my only questions. As Councilmember Rob asked about the ILAs earlier, I know we're still, we don't know about that yet. So those are all of my questions on the, the capital requests.
And we do have a number of potential savings, or items where we will save some money by county and economic development corporations assisting in the, in these projects.
This is Councilman Rob. I have one more question that reminded me. At our last workshop, I think we hoped to come back the following day that we didn't have better estimate on the lease of that vacuum truck for Public Works. Did we ever find any additional information concerning that, whether they've been purchasing it?
We did, and that is what is reflected in the budget. Marcy, do you have that lease number?
I think it's 500,000.
Well, that was, that was the cost of the truck. Lease payment. We have it spread over, I believe, six years, I think it is.
Oh, wow. That's good.
Yes, we it is on your capital worksheet handout that you received this evening. After the estimates and everything came in with and of course, this would be something that we would we, you know, we could shop around still. This was just a quote for budget. But it came in at 540,000 and so we budgeted a lease payment. It's in the water and sewer fund maintenance and operation expenditures at $68,077.
That was a good move as well. I don't recall who, who suggested that, which is the council members, but that was a good idea. So we're giving Ms. Lamb some time to work her numbers, any revision what you might need to make here.
This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. I also, I had one other, oh, Marcy, go ahead.
Yes, I just, I was just verifying in that 114,000 upper water crossing bridge is actually showing in Fund 19 as capital transferring from the general fund. So it is out of reserves and not out of debt.
Councilmember Morrow, you had another question.
Yes, I was, I was going to move on. I want to talk a little about the personnel request and, and I'll be completely honest. Going into tonight's meeting before the administrative assistant, I was 100, I'm bored with, with everything and approving, personally approving everything. My question is, now that I see that additional need, I wonder, this is just a suggestion and it might not work and I might be the only one that feels this way. But I thought about the possibility of hiring only one of the park's full-time employees now and then hiring a second one halfway through the fiscal year after they kind of evaluate and see if they need a second full-time employee or is one enough or they need a part-time employee. And that basically is that 53,000 that would, in my mind, transfer over to the administrative assistant. So that's just something, I actually, I think I emailed yourself and Mr. Quinn this during the budget process as a possibility. So I don't know if that's something during the budget process as a possibility. So I don't know if that's something anybody else is interested in or not. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I, I did get your email on that and talking with Mr. Rogers. They need those people that they did identify to take on the workload that they have and provide the service that we're asking them to provide. They they, they really kind of, if they do anything at all, Public Works, they'll, they might tend to underestimate their needs. And I understand what you're saying. But we would still need to account for that salary. Whether we hire them now or halfway through the year. We still need to account for that salary. And there's not much of way to account for a half a man when they go full-time in mid-year or lady. So that would be. I am, I am fully confident that what they have requested, they do need. They worked very hard. They complain of very, none, zero complaints. But we are growing in the amount of I'll say roadways and parks and the expectation that we have them up to be maintaining our right of way that they haven't even had opportunity to get to. So I understand what you're saying, but I would recommend, and I, that, that the council would approve the the request made by Public Works.
Okay, then can you go into a little more information on the administrative assistance? Like where will they be located? What currently happens when a public work call comes into the city? Just, was that something that they just brought to your attention like today or just a little more information about that, please?
Well, the, between Mr. Tucker and Mr. Rogers. They field all those calls. They do all the administrative paperwork. And frankly, this was about a week and a half ago, I believe, or two weeks ago. And talking with Mr. Rogers about their process over there is have you ever considered, I approached him, have you considered having a, an assistant to handle to, to field all the phone calls? And to do all the administrative paperwork so that you, Mr. Tucker, can focus on your expertise and your business. And his son, he goes, well, I've never considered that because I thought it would never happen. But he says, well, he got very excited for one, but he said, there is a lot of work that they could offload from us that's administrative and let us take care of our business of Public Works. David Rogers could expound on that more. He says, you know, if we get this person in and we start them on the basics of, you know, building the costs and help scheduling work orders, things of that nature and filling out, you know, basic reports, you know, like water reports, et cetera, that they do. He said, there is much, much more that they could learn and be of great assistance to. That's about as far as I can go with it, Mayor Protem.
Do you know they would, where they would be located?
Public Works.
Oh, that would be at the actual Public Works building. Okay.
Yes, yes. I wanted to ask Marcy, so your review, you know, Mayor Phil Tim's point, looking at the, the water crossing. I'm just confirming, there appears to be no amendment or correction to be made there.
No, it's showing coming from the general fund to Fund 19 and it's showing correctly in both places. And the debt, I can remove that out of the debt column. And then the debt column right now. We, the debt service payment that we're budgeting. That was based on the original request that I made to our financial advisor. So more than likely with some of the things we've moved. And then again, should we provide assistance either from the county or the EDCs? That debt payment would be reduced to truly what is the actual debt payment, what would be necessary with what we did actually fund. So that amount would be subject to change, but that's pretty much the worst case scenario based on the information we got from the financial advisor.
Mayor Phil Tim, does that answer your question? Any concerns?
No, no concerns here. Thank you. It just, it, yeah, drops it from, if I'm correct, it drops it from the 2.677 to 2.563. So, but which is, like you said, still the high end of what it might not even possibly be. So that, thank you.
Mayor Holsey. I'd like to make a motion to I'd like to make, make a motion to approve and adopt the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, ending September 30th, 2022.
Motion is made to adopt the budget fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022. Is there a second?
I second that.
Does the ordinance need to be mentioned or not?
It should be. Good catch. So I would like to. And a, and a, and a motion, so Councilmember Ricketts, will you amend your motion?
Ah, yes, I'd like to amend my motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 016-2021, which is the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022.
There's a second agree to the amended.
I second that.
Okay, it's revised motion and seconded and or repeated motion and seconded to approve ordinance number 016-2021, approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30, 2022. Is any further discussion? I'll call for the vote by roll call. Mayor Phil Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Maher.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Thank you, Council, very much. Good job. That takes us to item 3E. Discuss, consider, and act to ratify the property tax increase as reflected in the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 City of Hasslet budget. Now that property tax increase, Marcy, explain to us what that is. What number is that?
That number. The rate is .283229. And that would raise based on your no new revenue rate. Are you talking about the new construction piece or?
I'm talking about, it says the ratify the property tax increase.
Yes, so that's going to be. It'll raise taxes over the previous year. Your current tax rate is 2.49972. So. Hang on. The, the current budget. The 2021, 2021 adopted revenue budget for property tax was 2,151,435. So we're asking to increase to
Okay, let me clarify that. So you're working off the MNO column, correct? Or MNO when you cite those numbers?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the dollars. Now, the, the rate I'm looking at. The current year's tax rate is 2.249972. So we're increasing the rate from .249972 to 2.83229.
Let me ask you a question. When you say that, and the county has revised our valuations and has stated for us to generate that same revenue based on our revised and updated valuations, that that new tax rate that we were at .2499 is now at .270094 because we had a decrease in value, valuation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So using that chart that's on says page five of 63. We will be increasing, effectively increasing from .270994 to .283229. Did I state that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, Council, do you see that?
Yes, I'm a little confused about that though. For us to have no new revenue, if we, just to have to function on what we have currently, we'd have to go to .270094.
Correct. The reason for that is the county devalued or we lost valuation due to either lawsuits or exemptions or whatever the case may, or protest or whatever the case may be.
Right, I understand. But, but I do want to make sure when I am asked questions by citizens, but we are, we are raising, we all decided. We are raising our tax rate from .249972 to .283229 in order to fund our budget. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not sure people don't think we're only moving, we're only raising it from .27 to .28. We're really going from .24 to .28. So we have, we have to, but we've chosen to.
That's the value of, you know, those numbers, the mayor said, yeah, we are from .24, .28. I just wanted to point out to generate that .24 based on the previous valuations. That .24 today equals .27. That's, I was just making that point. Not, it sounded like I might have confused the matter. Looks like Councilman or Councilmember Rob agrees that I confused the matter.
No, 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 that was, no, that was not my reason for my thumbs up. No, you, you expressed it very well. I was thumbs up with your explanation.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, I'll, I'll attempt to make the motion, Mayor Protemorrow. So I make a motion to ratify the property tax increase. Do I have to say the actual amount? At the rate of .283229 as reflected in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Hasslet budget.
Let me, let me, I have a point of discussion here. The property tax increase is a dollar value. I'm asking Marcy to give us that dollar value. It's not the, it's not a property tax rate. It's the property tax, which is a dollar value increase above what our current budgeted revenue was.
So I need to say that we're 2.618,544. Marcy?
This item is actually to just ratify the rate of .283229. If you want to put a dollar amount in there.
That is the actual, that's what the budget tax increase is. Let me ask a question, two questions. So we're asking for 2,618,544 on MNO, which is, that's, that's the subject matter driving this rate. And so our last, our last year's MNO was 2 million, this is a question, 2,483,213. Is that correct?
If you were going to restate it for under the no new revenue rate.
What, what would be the old revenue then?
The old revenue that was adopted in the budget was 2,151,435.
435. So the tax increase would be the difference between the 216,544 and the 2,151,435. So I've got a calculator here.
I've calculated. 104.
Say, state that again.
I've calculated 467,104.
I got 109, so it's.
Sorry, I wrote down 109, correct.
109. Our property tax increase is 467,109 dollars. And that sounds correct, which is all based on the salaries and wages of the personnel requested. Now, that doesn't, this doesn't pay 100% of all of that because some of it, we're relying on tax, sales tax, as well as some permit revenue. But this underwrites the majority of the wages and salaries we've asked in addition for this year. The property tax increase, I'll state it again, is 467,109 dollars. So that would be included, the state of value in the motion. Would you, Mayor Phil Tim, would you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'll, I'll let the most negative. I'm confused on the, the, I get where the number is and I understand. I just didn't think, but someone else can give it a try.
Are you withdrawing your motion? Are you withdrawing your?
Yes, I, I believe I am.
Okay. Mayor Holsey.
This motion is withdrawn. Councilmember Ricketts?
I move, I move to increase the property tax.
I move, I move to increase the property tax increase of $467,109 as reflected from last year to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Hasslet budget.
I, let me make a correction, if you would, council member. Well, the item asks to ratify the property tax increase. I need to hear.
Yeah.
It's asking to ratify the rate, please.
I move to ratify the property tax rate of .283229, which is an increase of $467,109 to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Hasslet budget.
Very good. The motion is made to.
I second that.
Now, let me state the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I got to do my, I got to do my job here. The motion is made is to ratify the property tax increase and tax rate, the tax rate being .283229, and the tax increase of being $467,109 as reflected in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Hasslet budget. Is there a second? There is a second that I heard from Councilmember Nahera, is that correct?
That's correct, I second that.
Very good, all right, thank you. There is a motion that is second, is there any further discussion, council? There is no discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council, very much. Good job. With that, item four is adjournment, is there a motion? Hello?
Just Councilmember Rock, I'll move to adjourn. Hard to leave.
Motion, motion is made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second, Councilmember Ricketts.
There is a second. Councilmember, okay, I call for the vote. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Thank you very much, council, you have a good evening. And we'll have our next meeting, we'll have our next meeting 16th, next Monday. Again, we'll meet a supermajority quorum, anticipate not being there, let us know. See what arrangements we can make, and it may be very likely that we will have a remote meeting as well for that. And I will let y'all on the coming, or the most recent events of today and put y'all in a note. Very good. Have a good evening.
Mayor, could you say the time?
Yes, it is 8:14, August 9th, 2021, meeting is adjourned.